Sorry, we're getting started a little late here. I'd like to go ahead and call the December 13th meeting of the Salina City Commissioned Order.
Mayor Peck?
Here.
Commissioner Angel?
Here.
Commissioner Arbke?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'll open the meeting up for the Citizens Open Forum, which is a time that anyone is invited to come up and discuss something or ask questions about anything that is not on today's agenda. Doesn't look like anyone is here for that. Going to move back to item 4.1 here in just a little bit, but we're gonna, for the time being, move on to public hearings, an item scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing and Report on Petition Number 4331, Request Indication of a Portion of a Twenty-Foot East-West Utility Easement for a Public Water Line Located on Lot 3, Block 2, Wheat Ridge Edition. Sub-Item 5.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 10-10,581. Sub-Item 5.1B, Acceptance of a Public Utility Easement Dedication for the Relocated Public Water Line.
Go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Andrews?
The good news is, my presentation will be a lot shorter than my report. So, as far as the background on this, we are out on Foxborough Drive, and referring to what has been known as Foxborough Mini-Storage, or also as Storage Mart, and Dustin has aerial photo up there for you. Does not show the two northernmost buildings, but if what we started with was an original plan to build ten mini warehouse buildings, and that plan looked like this, and basically it was thirty by one hundred building, and ten of them in a row, and right in this location, or so everybody thought, there was an east-west water line that ran from Foxborough over to Centennial. And then, they changed their business model and plan, and came up with a different plan, and that plan is what you see here, which is to eliminate the five north buildings, do two large warehouse-type buildings where they would store what we refer to as pods, or the personal-on-demand cubicles that someone could place in their driveway and store things in anticipation of moving, or storing anything that they wanted temporarily out of the way. And so, these buildings were designed with that purpose in mind. And again, the two things that the plans had in common was that this building, this building, were separated by this water line. But as it turned out, when construction began on the north building, it turned out that the surveyor, who had helped the site plan to be laid out, and the architect, had mislocated this by approximately fifty feet, so when they started putting this building up, it went into this easement and over the top of this water line. So, we met with the parties involved earlier this year, and outlined a plan to how to rectify that situation, to get the water line from out, from under the building, and to get a line relocated, and that work has been done. So, we've now installed a water line south around that north building. The items that you have in front of you today are initiating the vacation of the easement that's underneath the building, and then the final action is, once that's done, then we need an easement for the relocated water line. And all the work and the relocation of that line has been done to the satisfaction of the Director of Utilities, so these are follow-up or cleanup items. And so, the public hearing is on the vacation of the existing easement, and there are no active utilities in there who object to losing that easement. And so, that would be the first item, and the follow-up item to that would be by motion that you accept the offered dedication for the relocated portion of the line. So, this stretch goes away through the vacation ordinance, and this piece here gets dedicated to replace it. And those would be the two recommended actions this afternoon. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Mr. Andrews, the water line, you said that it was, it was not surveyed correctly?
Well, what happened was, there is a survey that was prepared by a surveying group of this property. That survey was used by the architect. He basically overlaid his site plan over the survey, and what it turned out, they did where they measured from the north end, they used a different reference point than they should have, and it ended up on their survey that showed the easement and the water line being mislocated by fifty feet.
And that was, so that was the, who had hired the surveyor?
The original developers who were developing the mini warehouse complex hired a surveyor to do the survey, and then that survey was used by the architect, and was reviewed by us. But it's sometimes not unusual for a survey to miss an underground line, but they shouldn't miss the easement, and they missed both by fifty feet. So, they correctly showed the line to be in an easement, but they mismeasured from the north end by fifty feet, and so everything looked good on paper, but in the field, it was actually fifty feet farther north than, than what all the drawings showed.
And you said they found it during construction, so that's the developer, surveyor, somebody is gonna have to burden the cost of that?
Right. This, this doesn't remedy all, this will get it right as far as our local ordinances and getting the line out from under the building, but that will have to be sorted out by those parties.
Thank you.
Further questions? Is there any public comment? I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt on First Reading Ordinance Number 10-10,581, requesting the vacation of a portion of the twenty-foot eastway utility easement for a public water line located in the Wheat Ridge Edition.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance Number 10-10,581. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion passes five to zero. Accept a motion for 5.1B.
Mayor, I move that we also accept the public utility easement dedication for the relocated public water line.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we also accept a public utility easement dedication for the same relocated public water line. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. We're gonna go back up here and have a presentation. Presentation of the Ray Stillwell Award right now. It's good timing.
I know. Well, thank you for setting some time aside. You have a person that works for the city that is very, very deserving. My name's Roxanne Slater, and I represent the Kansas Water Environment Association. I am on the Collection System Committee and the Chair of the Ray Stillwell Committee. Just to give you a little background, the Ray Stillwell Committee was formed two years ago, and Ray Stillwell was the last Kansas Collection System Person, and the only person from the state of Kansas that was given the National Collection System Award. So, we thought, in his honor, that we would form a committee that was named after Ray. The Collection System Award is given to a person in the state of Kansas that has dedicated their life to the collection system, rehabilitation, maintenance, safety, both in public and private sectors. And in addition to that, that they have volunteered their services for the Kansas Water Environment Association, and Martha Tasker, who's the Public Works Director here, has chaired, she's been the President of the Association, she's been on the Collection System Committee for, well, I've been on it for twenty years, and she was on it when I got there, so a long, a long period of time. She is now the, one of the Directors on the Kansas Water Association Board that represents our ideas to the National Committee at the Water Environment Federation. So, I would like to present this award to Martha Tasker for her dedication in the collection system field, and also to let you know that I will be calling on each and every one of you, because we are submitting her for a national nomination. And it is due April 1st, so I will be calling you to get your letters of recommendation from Martha. So, thank you very much for all of your service.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Martha, would you like to say anything?
I started to think I sounded very, very old as she made that description.
Well, it dated you a little.
Dedicated my life, and I realize that I've been doing this type of thing for well over half my life, so I guess what she said was true. And this is an honor to get this award. Basically, it was given by my peers, which is pretty important, so, thank you.
Well, I can tell you, as an organization, we certainly realize your worth and your value, and from a personal perspective, I can tell you that the people I work with in the development community, and outside of that, that have dealt with you, speak very highly of you, and we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Roxanne, thank you for taking the time to come and present that today. We appreciate that. We're gonna move on to item 5.2.
Public Hearing and Report on Petition Number 4332, Requesting the Vacation of a Plotted Twenty-Foot Utility Easement Along the West, Southwest, South, and Southeast Boundaries of the Herd Plaza Edition. Sub-Item 5.2A, First Reading Ordinance Number 10-10,582.
Go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Andrews?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The public hearing portion of this item 5.2 is just 5.2A, and the purpose of the public hearing is to give potentially affected utilities an opportunity to comment on the request to vacate a portion of this easement. And I think you're familiar with this area, but the, this is suburban TV and Autozone here, and the area extending back into here is part of a nineteen-eighties plat called the Herd Plaza Edition, and the shape of it corresponds to the old Playland Park arrangement that used to be in this location. And the situation we have now is that the school district has purchased property over in this area, and they also own property on this side, and this is kind of an artificial barrier that keeps them from merging all that together into a campus format. And so, there was a request to go in and take all of this area, all the way up to here, and to vacate that, that was the initial request. Response back from West Star is that they had wires, overhead wires in here that served both Autozone and Norris Furniture, and that they did not object to losing this portion, but they wished to retain this, this part of the easement. So, the vacation ordinance that was prepared for your consideration today addresses just the shaded area you have there, and the legal description retains that easement for West Star. So, at this point, having no other objections from utility, staff would recommend approval of this vacation ordinance on first read.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Accept a motion.
Mayor, I move we adopt Ordinance Number 10-10,582, which would vacate the platted twenty-foot utility easement along the west, southwest, south, and southeast boundaries of the Herd Plaza Edition.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance Number 10-10,582. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Item 5.2B, Acceptance of a Public Drainage Utility Easement Dedication and Approval of a Covenants Related to the Storm Drainage Pipeline Located on Lot 1, Block 1 of the Herd Plaza Edition.
Mr. Strick?
Thank you, Mayor. As Dean mentioned, the item 5.2A is the item related to the public hearing, but the next two items, more than just geographically, topically relate to the same issue, so we grouped them together for your consideration. As you may recall, Genesis Health Club initially proposed a development plan that had construction very near their southern boundary, and as a result, they had a couple of code options to become compliant. One was to do fire separation within the building by constructing firewalls. The other option was to secure no-bill easements from the adjoining properties. And they chose to pursue no-bill easements, and ultimately, at the time, they were ready for a certificate of occupancy, those no-bill easements were underway but had not been secured. And so, we entered into, with your authorization, entered into a covenants running with the land, but with Southview Plaza doing business as Genesis Health Club. We come to you today because, as part of the process of securing those no-bill easements, we started conversations with the adjoining property owners, which brought up the topic that Dean just put before you in terms of the easement on the school property to the south. It also then brought up the question of the fact that there was an existing storm sewer line connected to South Ninth Street and running east-west across the suburban property, the Autozone property, and the property acquired by the school, that was disconnected in nineteen-ninety-eight, and they indicated a desire to be able to get service from that storm sewer line and reconnect that line. In the process of acquiring the, the no-bill easements from Autozone, they dedicated those as a drainage easement as a separate instrument, but then, as we tried to follow up on the school's request to activate that storm sewer line, it became necessary to dedicate drainage easements across the school property and the suburban TV property. And as those discussions went on, there are additional concerns that came up in terms of maintenance in its current state, possibly reconstructing it or replacing it to city standards, and then the impacts on the suburban property. So, ultimately, the document that came out of that, trying to facilitate the school district's request, was the document that's before you for consideration as item 5.2B. And that is both drainage easement dedication, as well as approval of covenants related to that drainage easement. On the blue sheet itself, the elements of the drainage easement are itemized in Items 1 through 5 at the bottom of the first page. The city of Salina agrees to reconnect the eight-inch storm sewer pipeline to the Ninth Street Storm Sewer System. The USD 305 School District agrees to dedicate a twenty-foot drainage easement across their holdings. The school district also agrees to maintain the existing eight-inch storm sewer line in its current condition until such time as it's replaced with a new line built to city specifications. At that point, it will become a maintenance responsibility of the city. The suburban properties, SSS Properties, Inc., agrees to dedicate an easement, ultimately it turned out to be an eighteen-foot easement, given the spacing of the building and the property line, as a drainage easement across their northern portion of their property. And the school district and the city agree with SSS Properties that if the parking lots damaged due to pipeline installation or repair and maintenance, that it would be repaired to its original condition. As I mentioned, Autozone has already dedicated a separate drainage easement that addresses the issue across their vacant portion of their property. The school district will be considering the same document on tomorrow evening, on the fourteenth, so this is a three-party agreement. We are basically the first ones taking action, although we have received confirmation from SSS Properties that they have reviewed it, and their legal counsel is satisfied with the form of the document. So, what you have before you as this particular item is authorization to accept the offered drainage easements and dedications and proposed covenants for the storm pipeline running from the former Higginman School site, authorizing the mayor to execute those documents, and then ultimately, staff will present those, provided that all the other conditions of the Genesis Project are met. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Are questions of staff? If not, is there any public comment? See none, accept a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept the public drainage easement dedication, approval of covenants related to the drainage pipeline located at Lot 1, Block 1, the Herd Plaza Edition, and the Suburban TV and Appliance Center at nineteen-hundred South Ninth Street.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we accept the offered drainage easement dedications and proposed covenants for the storm pipeline running from the former Higginman School site over to South Ninth Street, and authorize myself to execute said documents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Item 5.2, Release of Covenants Running with the Land by Southview Plaza of Salina LLC.
Mr. Strick?
Picking up where I left off, as I mentioned, this relates to the covenants running with the land that were executed in September in order to issue the certificate of occupancy for Genesis Health Clubs. The primary condition of those covenants was securing a no-bill easement. Now that you've acted on the prior item, the school board will consider granting that easement, as well as the no-bill easements Tuesday evening, assuming that they grant those no-bill easements. And we wrap up the remaining details with Genesis Health Club, they will be satisfying the covenants that we entered into in September with a deadline of compliance of September twentieth. So, assuming all those things fall into place, we then should be ready to record the necessary no-bill easements, release the covenants running with the land, and then as a second item, we secured a letter of credit as part of that, those covenants, and we'd be able to release those as well. So, we have every reason to believe that things are lined up, and things will fall into place between now and Wednesday, so that they will be satisfying those covenants. And so, our recommended action is actually two items for your consideration. First, authorizing the mayor to execute a release of the covenants running with the land by Genesis Health Clubs, and further authorizing staff to deliver that release to Southview Plaza upon satisfaction of the conditions of the covenants. And then, the second action item is to authorize the mayor to release the letter of credit by Kansas State Bank dated September twenty-first, 2010, and authorize staff to deliver that letter of release, or that letter of credit upon satisfaction of the applicable covenant.
Those need to be separate motions?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any questions? Any public comment? I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to execute a release of covenants running with the land by Genesis Health Club, and further authorize staff to deliver the said release to Southview Plaza of Salina LLC upon satisfaction of the conditions of the covenants.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we authorize myself to execute a release of covenants running with the land by Genesis Health Clubs, and further authorize staff to deliver the said release to Southview Plaza of Salina LLC upon satisfaction of the conditions of the covenants. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Mayor, I'd like to make another motion that we authorize yourself, as mayor, to release the letter of credit by Kansas State Bank dated September twenty-first, 2010, and authorize staff to deliver said release of letter of credit upon satisfaction of applicable covenants.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we authorize myself to release the letter of credit by Kansas State Bank dated September twenty-first, 2010, and authorize staff to deliver said release of letter of credit upon satisfaction of the applicable covenants. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Item 5.3, First Reading Ordinance Number 10-10,584, Amending the 2010 Budget.
Mr. Frans?
Fairness Commissioners, thank you. In recent years, it's become a standard practice for us to do a budget amendment in December, essentially cleaning up the budgetary process for all the changes that occurred during the year. That, again, is necessary this year. Today is not actually the formal hearing, it's the first reading of the ordinance. Formal hearing is scheduled for next week, and notice has been duly published in the local newspaper. Touch base on some of these changes, some of the more significant changes. Change to the General Fund is primarily to document and provide budgetary authority for the transfer of the Golf Course Fund that was done in, in March of this year, I believe. And then, there is also a proposal to budget a transfer of $200,000 to the Bicentennial Center Fund, so that they might be able to finalize the year with positive cash balance. Special Highway or the Gas Tax Fund. Gas Tax Fund expenditures are being revised upward to accommodate some additional funding, primarily in the area of carryover, and also to finance a, what this year was a relatively aggressive program in micro-surfacing and mill and inlay projects. Arts and Humanities Fund, this is the first full year of operation of that fund. As you may recall, in previous years, portions of that program were accomplished through a private foundation or through private activity, which the city supported in large part, and, and parts were done through the city. We consolidated that in 2009. That consolidation was actually completed after we had established the 2010 budget, and we anticipated at that time that we might have to make some changes as we learned how the consolidated operation worked. This amendment essentially does that. You might note that approximately half of the operation is funded through fees, and about half is funded through city general contributions. Sales Tax Capital Fund, a fairly substantial increase there. The bulk of that change is due to increases in proposed streetwork. We, during the year, elected to support the Pacific Improvement Project, East Pacific Avenue, in the amount of $200,000 out of this fund, and we also made a change to the fund to accommodate the Merrymount Project, which I believe is due to be considered later in this agenda. Those two changes amount to about $1.2 million in additional funds. Sales Tax Economic Development Fund, this fund operates basically on a, on an as-needed basis, and provides economic development incentives to those parties that pass through the SEDIC process. This year, the, the awards will exceed the amount of the original budget by a small amount. We are actually changing the fund, and will probably change the process permanently to try to, try to budget all proposed resources each year, so that we don't have to go through this, this exercise when we find that there were more opportunities than anticipated. Golf Course Budget, as I noted before, it is also being amended to accommodate supplemental transfer from the General Fund in February of 2010. They very nearly covered their expenses with their own source receipts this year. They were probably about $20,000 short. This will, they will, at this point, it looks like they'll make the end of the year without additional supplementation. additional supplementation, and may actually make it through the first quarter of next year, depending on how the playing environment works out. So we shall have to wait and see on that, but it, they had a relatively stable year this year compared to recent years. Bicentennial Center, were a number of changes to that fund this year, in large part due to the changing philosophies of operation. On the expense side, operating expenses came in very, very near to the original budget, approximately, I believe that's about $1,100 under budget. The capital budget originally was $10,000 for minor capital. We actually spent just a shade over $15,000. The bulk of that expense, as I recall, was for a forklift, and I don't recall, there were two other items that were in a consistent state of disrepair that we replaced. The original budget included a $200,000 item for debt services. This was money that was provided by the additional one-cent transient guest tax that was intended for capital improvements to the bicentennial center. And we had actually originally allocated those funds to pay the debt service on the current improvement project, because the bonds were actually issued a year later than anticipated. That left us with a year of those monies, and we actually applied that one cent to a reduction in the original bond issue for that improvement project. So we removed the $200,000 expense item for debt service. We also removed the corresponding $200,000 revenue item. Carryover changed from previous year, was reduced somewhat. On the revenue side, again, the carryover forward from last year was less than anticipated. Service charges were also somewhat less than anticipated, although not as, discrepancy was not as great as it very well could have been, it was approximately $37,000. And of course, the budget is then changed to accommodate the transfer from the general All of these adjustments are largely recognition of prior decisions that have been made throughout the year. I wouldn't be glad to try to answer any questions at this point.
Questions to Mr. Frans?
Mr. Frans, if I'm reading this right, and I completely may not be, but on the bicentennial center, it looks like the debt service was a wash. The expenses is just about dead on what we predicted, so the big problem is not enough revenue.
Is on the revenue side, that's correct. That is, that is, is correct.
And you mentioned back on the golf course, they almost ended, well...
2000, had we not transferred the $50,000 in February, they would have been about $25 or $30,000 short of covering their own expenses with their own revenues.
Okay.
So it was, it was a close thing this year, but they just did not quite break even.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Do we anticipate, I suppose, maybe this is a question for Marshall, but on the bicentennial center, you know, some of the improvements we've made haven't had, you know, they're recently completed. We haven't realized a full operating year with those improvements, and come on up. Some of the implementation of our food service changes and pricing haven't been put into place yet. Do we anticipate that 2011 is gonna see a fair increase in revenue based off of our ability to attract other, you know, new events, et cetera, new meetings? Help me out here with projections.
Yes, sir, you're correct. We have not had a full year yet with all the new improvements, with all the new improvements we've done to the Heritage Hall. We've already picked up a good many more new meetings for this coming year in Heritage Hall and in the meeting rooms upstairs. Ones that are totally brand-new have not been on our calendar before, so we should have an increase on that. Many of these are ones that are already anticipating using our food and beverage service, so we should have more revenue there. We've got commitments from other groups that are currently meeting with us for multi-year agreements. So yes, sir, we're looking at an anticipated increase in 2011.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners?
I would add that one of the issues with the bicentennial center is, in terms, there are a number of events scheduled for December that will be, I think, pretty positive for us, but that, those monies will not be coming in, well, I don't want to say they will not be. Typically, some of those monies do not come in until January or February, as it runs through the process of getting processed, so.
Take you back to the golf course real quick, too. One thing that is probably helpful, when we've looked at other golf courses, one thing we've found is a lot of the golf, public golf courses are actually fairly used to subsidizing their course, probably between $100,000 and $200,000 a year, depending on what types of investments they put into it and their setup. Sometimes it's their arrangement with their clubhouse, and there's differences. We have always been under a, the fees should support the operations cost model in Salina, so we've had a pretty high standard for the course. And I think we, I think that's been good, and I think we should keep that. But when you look at that, we haven't quite met that, our own high standard. This last year was a little better than prior years, so we're kind of getting in there. But when we see multiple courses around us, you know, be constructed and more places for people to play, it makes it a little tougher. All in all, when we compare, though, to what's been pumped into other courses to make them survive, I think we're still doing fairly well, but we still would like to try to get it to a break-even point if we can.
Well, and we always have subsidized the bicentennial center, is that correct? It has never even come, I realize we're at two different levels, but when you compare ratio-wise, the golf course with its expenditures and revenues as compared to the bicentennial center, are we doing a little bit of a better job than the bicentennial, excuse me, the golf course almost being able to stand on its own versus, I just feel like we're always, we've always been subsidizing the bicentennial center so heavily?
Yeah, and you know, a lot of it's the type of service you're providing. For example, if we had, I don't know, well, the bus system is a good example. Transit systems are always heavily subsidized. You don't ever expect a transit system to break even. Golf courses can break even. Typically, public courses are subsidized to a certain degree. Facilities like the bicentennial center are usually more heavily subsidized. And that's why when we put together the business plan, what we did is set up a goal to reduce that subsidy by virtue of bringing in more events and activities and more revenue from those. We've done things, you know, with the fees and the facilities and all that, too, but ultimately, I think you know this, ultimately, it's about how many events and activities we bring into that facility that generates the revenue, because there's a lot of fixed costs with a facility like that. So as you know, we subsidize with transient guest tax funds and then also with direct general fund contribution. And our objective is actually, especially starting next year, when some of these things are sort of churning, to start to reduce that down and meet the business plan targets. So we've got a report we owe to you on that, too, particularly before we come back and look at any other significant investment in the facility. So we're still working on that, but that target's still there, and we're still working towards it.
And if I can ask one other question, I've, it just hit me, I've never really asked this, or maybe if you've answered, it's kind of went, yeah. How many, of all the events that we have at the bicentennial center that sometimes the overflow goes into some of the other buildings, you know, with our, the county part, how does that work between, does the bicentennial center pay the county? And I'm trying to think what, besides, trying to think what goes over into the...
Well, you know, there's that large event that's put on by the chamber called the Farm Expo.
There's that, yeah. Besides that one?
And see, they rent us, and they rent over there.
Okay. We never do it the other way, to where we have an event that we're needing to use those buildings?
We have not as of yet, in the time period that I've been here now. I have had discussions with the folks over across the street where if we got a large event where we could bring it into both venues, is there the potential for us renting space from them? Now, that being said, we just came back from a large convention this past Thursday in Topeka, where we were talking with a group that's really only gone to like Las Vegas and Orlando for their event. They're talking 4,000 people. With the chamber, with Joanne from the chamber, we kind of filtered that over to her to see if there was a potential, because that's larger than what we're used to dealing with and seeing if that could be something that through the chamber, they could kind of pull that event together and bring it to Salina. Does that kind of help you there?
Yeah, my reasoning for why I asked this is because with some of our costs going up at the bicentennial center, and then it's no secret that the county raised those fees over for those buildings substantially, I was hoping that this wasn't going to just run us out of the competitive market.
No, ma'am, and quite frankly, when we have, when we're dealing with new clients, like some of the ones who we talked to at this convention this past Thursday, we were going over with them, some of our costs didn't even faze them. They just...
Meaning they're aware of those kind of...
They were used to that type of a fee, you know, as far as our rent is concerned, as far as food and beverage is concerned, they were used to those kind of figures. They were, they were like, okay.
So we're right in line? Okay.
That was the, that was the response I was getting from them in my discussions with them, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Commissioners, something to think about, too, and we did, when we looked at those rates, we compared against some of the comparable facilities. And when we compare, we're comparing against published rates, you know, what they'll, what's out there, and we know that. And we recognize that when a facility typically is trying to get a large event, they're going to submit a proposal, and it may not, it may be less than their published rates. So we keep that in mind, and so when we came back to you with the rate increases last time, you provided us the discretion to modify those rates by up to 15%, both on food and facility side, so that hopefully we're competitive, recognizing that not everyone pays the published rate, that they, or sometimes they're negotiated or part of a bid package or something like that. So right now, we think we're right in line with all that if we utilize that tool.
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Frans, I couldn't tell from mine, because I think I got a copy where part of the charts were clipped over and stuck on a different one, so I kind of had a bit of a go trying to line up the columns, so to speak, but can you, can you project write-off compared to like the operating subsidy last year, what the operating subsidy is this year?
For...
Compared to budget for the bicentennial center?
Bicentennial center.
Those have been like the simple three items to...
Yeah.
...to hit us with. And if you don't, if you can't recall those, then don't, don't stretch on them.
Yeah, I could not.
Okay, it would be helpful in the future if you could give, me in particular, that picture of here's what the subsidy was last year, here's what we thought it would be this year, and here's what we want now. Then it'd be, it'd be all real clear.
You know, in the back of my mind, I've got some numbers rolling around, but I'm hesitant to share them.
I don't want to pin, I don't...
Lots of numbers rolling around in my mind, usually.
Pretty sure it was 400-plus last year.
Yeah, yeah, it, I don't believe it was, was quite 600. It was somewhat less than that, but...
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Any public comment? Not all, accept the motion?
Mayor, I just have to say, we are trying to decrease the supplement from the city budget to the operations fund for the bicentennial center, and right now, we're not even holding it at an even level, and I'm just not comfortable at this point voting to increase our supplement for operations to the bicentennial center from $475,000 to $675,000.
Let me, I'd like to ask a question of clarification of Mr. Frans, if I could do that.
Sure.
Rod, you made reference in here to the additional $200,000 in maintenance that was part of the business plan. That is included as an expense in this? Is that included as an expense in these numbers? Or presumed expense in the budget?
You could say that, yes.
Okay. The reason I bring that up is, the thought being is there was some operating maintenance needs, and what we said is, is basically the plan, the business plan recommended $200,000 per year, and you said, okay, that's fine, put it in 2010. And it's for things like you could buy chairs and just all kinds of different things, actually. And so what that did is that actually increased your expenditures by $200,000. So that was, that's something that wasn't in there in prior years. Now, it wasn't made up on the revenue side, but if that wasn't in there, your number's actually $200,000. I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at Rod to make sure I'm saying this properly, but I believe your number's actually $200,000 better than what this number would be if that was not included in there this year. Is that similar?
Yeah, you know, it's a, it's a little bit hard to say. Specifically, I would say we did not spend $200,000 additional in our capital line items. Now, I don't know how much of the other expenses might have, might have gone towards that $200,000 additional operating maintenance that was provided.
Well, that's where I asked the question. I mean, our expenses were almost right on what we predicted, it was all on the revenue side where we fall in short.
And that $200,000 was part of that budget?
Yeah, it was part of the budget. Ultimately, it affects the final financial position, but it was part of this budget.
So I think what you're asking is that projection of requiring the other $200,000, is that assuming that we're spending the $200,000 budgeted for the ongoing maintenance of the facility and we're an additional $200,000 in need?
It's hard for me to answer that specifically. You know, essentially, part of the cash need at the center, if you look just at the unencumbered balances, January 1 of 2010, there was a difference of about $80,000 from what we had expected. So a part of this is a carryover from our position at the end of last year. Yes, last year, we didn't supplement as much as we're proposing to this year, but we also, you know, ended the year in a lot worse financial position than we started the year last year.
But Rod, are you projecting that with the 200 in the budget, there's X dollars that it would have been so-called spent out of that account, but, or that line item, but are, in your projection, does your projection include the presumption that that would be spent in full?
My expenditure projection, no.
Right, it doesn't? Okay, how much of that do you think it includes?
Hard to say. Obviously, you know, there's, there's an amount in capital that we haven't spent for several years, so you're talking about 15 there, and I'm not sure what else they might have had in their maintenance and operations that would have been tied to additional maintenance at the facility. You know, if it is embedded in some of their other line items, I wouldn't know it. But you are correct on that the operations expenditure is very nearly matched, matched the budgeted amount for those. I guess the point is a piece of the financial position now has to do with the financial position last year and how we ended, ended the year. And though we did not supplement it to the extent that we are proposing this year, on the other hand, the fund balance dropped substantially from where we anticipated it would, to about $80,000. So I guess you could argue that about half of the supplement this year is actually attributable to last year's experience.
Rod, real quick, sorry. Okay, I want to make clear in here that the projected fund balance, if the general fund subsidy is modified, the projected fund balance for the bicentennial center would be?
About 82,000.
Okay. So we're talking about an increase in about 200,000 to net about 82 to the plus at the end of the year?
Right.
Okay, to the plus, meaning in fund balance?
Yes. Fund balance, beginning of the year was 63, so we're going from 63 to 82.
Okay.
We had anticipated being at about 139 at the first part of the year.
And so anything less than the projected fund balance being transferred in, in essence, would put it into a negative financial position?
Yes.
If you're proj, I mean, based on the accuracy of the projections?
That's correct.
Okay.
There's no further questions or comments? I'll ask if there's any public comment. I'll ask if there's any public comment. Not all accept a motion.
Let me clarify. And I'm looking over at you now, Jason. The need here is to transfer in the money into the Bicentennial Center fund to offset additional losses that are entirely made up of shortfall in revenue as of right now, and if that's not acted on, then the fund has a negative balance.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. What, you can ask that question?
Will you answer it for me?
Might be the wrong answer. I just answered a question.
I asked him, because he just, you know, blurted out. We cannot end on a negative balance?
That is correct.
That we cannot? Oh, he was right.
We are prohibited from doing that, so.
So this is one of those like it or not things?
Essentially, you know, if my projections are correct, and we want to do an additional transfer of 120,000 or thereabouts, and if we have a decent December, then we may end the year with a zero cash balance, and we would be legal. If we do less than that, we essentially are in a position of locking the doors.
Yeah, Rod, what's our target fund balance for the Bicentennial Center?
I believe it's 200,000.
200, so even with the 200, transfer, if it's approved, we end up roughly with 80-some thousand.
Eighty, yes.
Or still 120 less than the target would be, so it's a pretty small margin.
Yeah. You know, and we have, this year, we took particular care to make the scheduled city general fund transfers on a quarterly basis, as well as the transient gas tax transfers to try to keep a reasonably even cash flow throughout the year. And I will tell you that at the end of every quarter, it was not unusual for me to go talk to my accounting people, well, my accounting person, and say, let's make the quarterly transfer on the 30th of the month instead of the 1st, because otherwise, we're not going to be solvent. So it has run pretty close to the mark all the way through the year, and it just gets to the point here at the end where we are not going to make the end of December without some additional supplementation.
Thank you. Marshall, of course, I know you're, you don't have to get up. I know you're working hard on this, but I'd encourage you to work even harder. I won't be here this time next year, but I can think of a couple Commissioners who will be even less sympathetic this time next year. So, hopefully, we can put our investment to good use this year in recruiting and getting events in there. If there's no further questions, again, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve the reading of ordinance number 10-10-584, amending the 2010 budget.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number, excuse me, 10-10-584, amending the 2010 budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one, did I get that right? With Commissioner Angel dissenting. Move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the amendments of November 22, 2010. Item 6.2, resolution number 106779, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Jerry Godsey for his employment with the city of Salina from September 11, 1995 to December 15, 2010. Item 6.3, resolution number 106780, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Harvey Kuczek for his employment with the city of Salina from July 29, 1979 to December 15, 2010. Item 6.4, resolution number 106781, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Ronald C. York for his employment with the city of Salina from September 26, 1978 to December 15, 2010. Item 6.5, resolution number 106782, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Paul F. Beale for his employment with the city of Salina from May 16, 1982 to December 15, 2010. Item 6.6, resolution number 106783, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Keith W. Davis for his employment with the city of Salina from March 23, 1992 to December 15, 2010. Item 6.7, resolution number 106784, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Ralph W. White for his employment with the city of Salina from January 1, 1996 to December 15, 2010. Item 6.8, award of contract for the sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation phase two, project number 10-2832, to advance underground inspection LLC in the amount not to exceed $45,426.42. Item 6.9, award of contract for the Bicentennial Center improvements, arena risers refurbishing project number 092771, to Heartland Seating Company in the amount of $189,604, and removing alternate five from the bid.
Is there any particular item a Commissioner would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to see item 6.9 removed from consent agenda.
Okay, if we could set aside that. I'd also like to comment very quickly, although none of the aforementioned employees are here today to accept their awards, would like to publicly thank them all for many years of service that they devoted to the city and to this organization, so thank you for that. Okay, all accept a motion to approve everything about 6.9 on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda except for item 6.9.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.9. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes five to zero. We'll move on to item 6.9 separately. Mr. Perry, would you come up?
This goes back to a project, one of the three projects that I introduced to you all back in July of this year. If you recall, the other two projects were, oh Lord, now I've even forgotten the other two projects, but this is the final one. This will deplete the entire fund now of renovations, and it essentially brings an end to our work. This was when we were putting together the three projects that we were looking at as ones that were critical issues for the Bicentennial Center. The refurbishing of the risers is one that is pretty critical. These are in very bad shape. They're 31 years old to the building. The staff has been the ones who've basically been trying to hold it together, and we've robbed pieces off the risers that are kept over in storage in the building located between us and Kenwood Cove, to basically keep these parts and pieces running together. This is the first work that has been done on this equipment in the 31 years of the operation of the facility.
Mr. James, did you have a specific question?
Yeah, first of all, I guess I'd like to know about the financing of this, or how it was planned to be paid for.
Well, this is coming, you remember there was the $2.5 million pot of money that we were using for the renovations? This is the last of that, that'll pay for the renovations. The fees to pay for the architectural, that will come out of our capital operation fund for next year, and that'll end it out.
And were these shortfalls from the original project? Because I've heard the electrical, right? These are what you're making reference to, the RV hookups and the parking lot?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
And these three items, are we saying that they were formally combined as one project and approved as one project, or are these from the other capital, the phase two of the Heritage Hall project?
Okay, there was the first project, which was the meeting rooms upstairs and about 60% of Heritage Hall. There was the second part, which was the completion of Heritage Hall, and then there was these three projects. The electrical pedestals, the parking lot, and the arena risers.
Commissioner, I think what you're asking is, when we first projected or estimated the cost of the major projects, the renovation projects, those did come in with more competitive bids, and in essence, there was more, there were some dollars left over from the bonded amount that was originally set. And so the smaller projects that have come in, the parking lot pedestals, the other, and then this, are the projects that were prioritized to basically utilize the rest of those bond proceeds?
Yes.
That are available.
Can you, if this is not approved, could we use those bond proceeds, the 190,000 and change, to pay back to the bonding company to reduce our debt? Or do we have to spend that money?
I think the short answer is no. It's not quite that simple. We would have to use these proceeds for some purpose that were, was identified in the original, or the amended bond resolution in this case, which are improvements to the facility or the grounds.
And that can't be amended? Sorry, Rod, sorry. You walked faster than I was thinking.
It can be amended. I would be, and I'm speaking off the top of my head here, it seems like when I've asked this question of bond council before, they have been very reluctant to take bond proceeds and turn around and use them to repay bonds, other than the minimus proceeds that are normally, might be left over at the end of the issue, which normally amounts to a few thousand dollars. This would be more than that sort of amount.
Okay, if we don't want to spend their money, this money, is there anything we can do to undo it?
To undo?
To undo the obligation that now have to spend 190,000. If we don't want to spend it, what can we do? Other than, I mean, maybe the short answer is have to go back and amend that original bond.
I would need to look at the financing of the project, because this project actually consists of, on the revenue side, the bond proceeds, the additionally, I talked about the additional one cent from the transient gas tax, and then there was a remainder due from the energy audit project that was supposed to be programmed into the Bicentennial Center, got put on hold because the Heritage Hall project was under design, and so some of those funds were used. Unfortunately, those were also bond proceeds. So we don't have, we don't have very much wiggle room as to what part of the project might not be, might not be proceeds.
Rod, can the bonds be repurposed? Can the remaining allotment be repurposed?
We have done that once. The original bond resolution provided specifically for improvements to the interior of the building only, and we then had an amending resolution that repurposed them to the interior building, the exterior of the building, and the grounds improvements. So, it is pretty general at this point in terms of being applied to the Bicentennial Center facility.
So you're saying if you, the limitation repurposes, you can't go still beyond the facility? For example, if someone said, rather than put money into the Bicentennial Center for whatever maintenance item is here, we would rather put it into a street, can you repurpose the bonds for that purpose?
I'm going to say that that would probably meet with some skepticism at bond council, but we could ask the question.
Commissioners, if you want to postpone the item, we can ask the question of bond council. I will tell you, though, the items that have been purchased here, I mean, especially this item, is really a strong, a maintenance item. There's a point in time, I mean, these things are all 30 years old. We're not into even painting the outside or any flashy thing like that. You've got a sound system that basically almost doesn't work in the arena, and some other things. And so sooner or later, unless you close the doors to the facility, that's an option. Sooner or later, though, if we don't do that, we're going to have, I mean, we have to do this. It's bad that these have kind of been placed in your lap, because a lot of these things should have been worked on in the last 30 years. There's no question about that, and they have been, and it's, a lot of these are big gulp items, and quite honestly, not everything on the list that we need to do that quickly. Some of them are, you know, more than just, probably just a pure maintenance item. At some point, these, we're not going to be able to use these anymore, and that's why we looked at refurbishing. To purchase them is very expensive, and we got a bad estimate initially. They were supposed to be a lot less expensive. The vendor provided the estimate, it was way off, but you have three bids, they're all competitive, you got a little bid, you could rebid it if that was an issue. It wouldn't, probably wouldn't make a whole lot of difference, and I don't suspect that's really the issue anyway at this stage.
Yeah, the way that this hit me was, we addressed these issues, and granted, we can't do $10 million worth of R and M all at once, otherwise, it'd be a new facility. And so we put in a couple hundred thousand dollars every year to chunk on maintenance. So, let's say we spend that $200,000 this year, and we do another $300,000 here, then instead of working at it 200,000, which we cognizantly put together as part of the maintenance program to start trying to maintain what's going on now and catch up on some of that, we've better than just doubled our intentions in one piece of paper. And that's where I separate it different than, like your RV hookups. You had two, you expanded them, we're going to make some revenue off of it, we're adding to the facility. This is, required or not, this is just purely maintenance, and this will better than double the amount of money that we set as a commission that we were going to invest in the facility each year. And that's just where it strikes me, which would be different than a new entryway, or any other things that are substantial improvement to the asset that we have, and ergo, not true maintenance, or repair of something that exists.
Yeah, you're going to, if you go back and look at the big list, I don't have it in front of me, but you're going to find a lot of items that are going to be characterized, really, as maintenance. Replacing and/or repairing and painting the external skin of the building is maintenance. The roof is maintenance, the HVAC is basically maintenance, sound systems are maintenance. Most of those projects, I mean, a non-maintenance project would include the corridors surrounding the Heritage Hall. That would be sort of an addition, or certainly going beyond maintenance to try to access the rooms, but quite honestly, most of the lists are probably maintenance-type projects. So, it's really kind of where, how you want to do those. You're not going to be able to do them all with a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. You're going to have to, because even over 10 years, that's 2 million, and that's not going to be enough to do it. So it's just trying to figure out when and what you'd like to do. And we can come back with those, you know, that plan and those projects, that's really not an issue, but this is just one, if you want to do it with maintenance, we could wait and take it out of the $200,000 next year, not award the bids. Vendors would be a little bit upset, but the bids did come in higher than the estimate, so we have reason to do that if we want to. That's, there's going to be another maintenance thing in the next year, and the next year, and the next year as well, but, I mean, we can do that.
Is there a reason why alternate five was removed? Was that an expense that we didn't need?
There are multiple alternates, and that's something I think we felt we could buy the material and cut it to fit.
It was the mats? The aisle mats, is that correct?
We can do mats. The biggest advantage of the mats are a softer step, and they eliminate some of the noise, but we can buy the material and cut it a lot cheaper than we could buy it through the vendor, so it made sense to eliminate it.
Well, and I did notice that the lowest bidder, they were substantially lower on some of the, some of their, made me a little nervous. I hope that those aren't misquotes, or misbids.
No ma'am, actually, Mark is here from Jones Gilmarins, who assisted us in this project, and when we saw the bids come in, he immediately began calling all their references. This company, who was the low bidder, yes, I was kind of shocked at the variance there.
Well, like the curtains, especially the curtains.
Right. We, he began checking all the references, and all of the references came out tip-top, no problems.
Okay, well, this either means that the curtains are going to last 30 days, or, you know, you get what you pay for, is the other side of the coin also. You know, we want the best bid, we don't want to spend the money, but we need to spend the money, and then when you spend the money, if it doesn't, if it's not in for the long haul, then you find that you're going to be replacing this stuff in five years, because it was not of the proper, the quality.
And I do want to clarify for the public, when I said the estimate was obtained from a vendor, and the estimate was much lower than the bids have come in, it wasn't, it's not the low bid vendor that gave us the estimate. That's correct.
That is correct.
So, it's not them.
It was a sales rep, not a technician. The sales rep is who was trying to, you know, just give a number, whereas the technicians who came and crawled underneath everything gave us the really good numbers.
Correct, okay, okay.
This is Mark, he might be able to address what you were asking about the curtains?
Well, that- Well, that was just the one that struck me. You know, they were substantially lower than the other people, and, um, I see that the, the, who is this? Heartland?
Heartland Seating, yes.
Was it Heartland? Yeah, they, um, they were quite a bit lower on some of these.
Yes, and what we-
Alternates.
And what we expect from each of our bidders is, uh, that they're meeting or exceeding any of the specification items that we have. They will be submitting shop drawings that we'll, um-
Right.
Review and make sure that all of those, those materials and items do meet, and if they don't, we reject it, and they have to submit an item that, a material that does meet or exceed our specifications and drawings.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the reasons why they said they were, uh, quite a bit lower was, they're a lot smaller company than some of these other, uh, companies that put bids in, so therefore their overhead was a lot less, plus it sounded like they needed a little bit more work, uh, than what some of the other companies did as well. So that, like I said, I called them immediately after I got the bids and was concerned the same.
Okay.
But was glad that they were so much lower, though, too, in its, as, in the same.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is item six point nine something the commission would like to set aside for another time, or is it okay to vote on this today?
Are we going to wait for Rod to-
Yeah, you could post-
-ask those questions, or?
I believe that Rod-
Uh, he was going to follow up with bond couns-
I'll make sure the bids are still valid, but I, typically adding a week is not an issue with that, so, um, I make a presumption that, uh, the bids will still be valid in the, in a week, and that if you'd like us to go ahead and check the question of repurposing the bonds for some other use, we could get a, a more clear answer for you for that, if you wanted to postpone.
I might volunteer some information that wasn't asked for. Uh, the amount left in the fund is roughly a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, as I recall. Hundred and eighty-three thousand of that is attributable to the tourism proceeds.
Is what, I'm sorry?
Is attributable to the tourism proceeds. So we have essentially spent all of the bond proceeds now on a first-in, first-out basis, in other words, bond proceeds are spent first, uh, which means the remaining money has to be purposed according to the tourism rules, uh, and that, that tax was approved specifically for capital improvements to bicentennial center.
Well, that changes things.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's get this voted on. Is there any, is there any other questions? Any public comment? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I guess that's me. Um, Mayor, I move that, um, that we award the contract for the bicentennial center improvements, project number zero-nine dash two-seven-seven-one to Heartland Seating Company in the amount of one-eighty-nine-six-zero-four, as provided in this bid, or in this.
Since maintenance is part of the overall plan to have more business at the bicentennial center, we'll go ahead and second this.
It's been moved and seconded that we, uh, award the contract for the bicentennial center improvements, specifically the arena rise refurbishing, project number zero-nine dash two-seven-seven-one to Heartland Seating Company, in the amount of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and four dollars. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes three to two, with Commissioners Jennings and Angel dissenting. There is no development business, we'll move on to administration.
Item eight point one, second reading ordinance number ten dash ten thousand five hundred and eighty, changing the zoning just to classification from RS to I two to allow construction of a commercial storage building, on property addresses nine-fourteen West Grant Avenue.
This ordinance was passed on first reading on November twenty-second, two thousand and ten, and since that time, no comments have been received. Any public comment today? I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance ten dash ten-five-eight oh on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number ten dash ten-five-eight zero on second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Arbkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mayor Peck?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero.
Item eight point two, first reading ordinance number ten dash ten thousand five hundred and eighty-three, admitting chapter twenty-seven, article two, section twenty-seven dash sixteen of the Salina Code pertaining to closing hours of the parks.
Mr. Gage?
Mayor and Commissioners, in nineteen ninety-one, the city commission established a closing time between midnight and five AM for Jerry Ivy Park, Indian Rock Park, Lakewood Park, Kenwood Park, and Oakdale Park. Um, at that time, the, uh, closing time between eleven PM and five AM was also established for Sunset and Bill Burke Parks, I think primarily because of concern of, uh, outdoor activities and lighting. Um, the earlier closing times were primarily intended to address things like vandalism and, and that type of criminal activity you might find late at night at those areas. In nineteen ninety-three, the, uh, midnight to five AM closing time was expanded again to include Centennial Park. Um, the nineteen ninety-one ordinance established a permit system, providing the city manager with authority to permit, uh, for specific, or specific programs, activities, or events during such time as the park is otherwise closed. So we have the ability, if there's a special event, to address that already in the ordinance, and I think that's, for the most part, worked pretty well, and we do fishing for Lakewood Park and Smoky Hill River Channel, and, and certainly we can do special events. Uh, more recently, the city prosecutor and the police department have recommended adding Founder's Park, East Crawford Recreation Area, and the Salina Soccer Complex to the list of those parks under the closing time of midnight to five AM, and, uh, for some of the same reasons as the original intent of this, the vandalism and criminal activity and so forth. Uh, the request, uh, kind of prompted staff, with the quantity of parks already under, uh, the closing time, to, uh, ask the question of whether or not really all parks should fall under that closing time, that aren't otherwise designated, maybe for an earlier closing time. So that question was asked of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board at their November meeting. They felt that it made sense to, uh, possibly bring all the parks in under, um, for consistency purposes. Um, they, uh, they were pretty comfortable also with the administrative permitting process. They, there was a little bit of a concern, wondering, you know, what if somebody's just walking from point A to point B, walks through the park, and whether they would be ticketed, and, and, uh, we thought about adding language, but, uh, talking with, uh, Police Chief Jim Hill, we determined that it's, this is just part of good sense. It's not, in, in, good sense and good judgment, it's not any different than if you're going to write speeding tickets for going thirty-one in a thirty. Um, you just have to apply some judgment there, and he, he really didn't feel like we would need to do that. Certainly, we could, though, if you'd like to. Um, so with that, we provided you with some recommendations. Uh, we have a couple options on the ordinance. Uh, option A is to include all the parks not currently listed to have closing hours of twelve midnight to five AM. So later, if we create new parks, they would automatically fall into that unless you designate otherwise. The other option is just to limit the, uh, uh, change of the closing times, or the addition of parks to include Founder's Park, East Crawford Rec, and Salina Soccer Complex as origi- originally intended, and then obviously, the last option would be not to, to change that at this time. So, um, we have, uh, Captain Mike Sweeney with the Police Department, and our city prosecutor Jennifer Wyatt here, and also, of course, Chris Curtis with Parks and Rec, and hopefully, uh, between the, or among the four of us, we can answer any questions you have on this.
Thanks. Questions of staff?
I was at a meeting one time when Chris spoke about all our parks, and mentioned how many parks there were in Salina, and I was really surprised. What was that number?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. I thought I saw it in here again somewhere, you mentioned it, so, yeah, that's quite a lot of parks. Now, are you saying if this falls under the umbrella for all parks, that all of them would re- would require signage? They don't have?
We would, we would want to put signage, and I think that definitely we would do that, because it's important for the public to know when the closing times are, but it's not-
Is that expensive?
No, we, I don't have a specific cost for you, but we're not talking large, big, uh, signs, we're talking small informational signs.
Especially at some of the smaller-
Yeah.
-neighborhood parks.
Yeah, that's something we may even be able to fabricate internally, so I wouldn't expect a, a great deal of cost, and, and, you know, a good portion of our parks are already, already have closing times anyway, so.
Um, does our, uh, do our police, um, monitor any of those smaller parks anyway, as part of their-
I, yeah, I think they, as part of their regular patrol, I think it's-
Right.
-part of their habit to do that, and Captain Sweeney may be better able to discuss that, but I'm pretty sure they do check those from time to time.
Okay, I realize the larger parks sometimes tend to be a little bit more, um, larger parks probably tend to be a little bit more, more patrolled than some of the smaller neighborhood parks, but I just didn't want it to add more work.
No, the officers are assigned beats, and we have a total of, uh, six beats, and they're just responsible for everything in their area, and if that includes-
So, so right now, if they were patrolling, uh, these smaller parks at three AM, and they would see people there, they couldn't do anything about it?
That's correct.
You were allowed to sleep in those parks?
Yes, as long as-
Or have, or have a little gathering, a little party at three AM?
Yeah, that is correct.
Quietly?
Yes, and that would give us authority to remove them from the parks.
Okay, that's-
We wouldn't have to watch them, make sure they don't vandalize them.
Okay, all right.
I guess my thought is if the concern is criminal activity going on between the hours of midnight and five AM, why we think people who are going to go there to engage in criminal activity are going to not go there, because there's a sign that says the park is closed.
Well, that's a good question. Yeah, that's a good point, because if your intention is criminal activity, why would you really care?
Yeah.
That's just one other crime. Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I, I'm not sure if, in fact, it would actually, uh, eliminate the criminal activity, uh, but it, I think it does give law enforcement another tool if they see someone there to first, and they, they can still inquire today as to why someone might, might be in the park, but they can then make a determination whether or not they'd like to cite them if they see them there versus not being able to do that.
I, I think there's a gentleman here today that might comment, uh, about a particular park in general that has, uh, a lot of different dealings that, that happen, a variety of dealings that happen at that park, um, that just the fact that they're now prohibited from being there at certain times, at least gives our law enforcement officials a reason to, to get them out of there, and perhaps patrol that a little bit better.
Well, I was going to ask Ms. Wyatt if she could tell us about what offenses she's seeing in her office going on, if there really is, I, I wasn't sure if there really was criminal activity going on, or if it was just a concern that there was, that there could be criminal activity going on.
I don't see a lot come through, and, and Captain Sweeney can probably address that better than I can.
Well, the parks, particularly on the outskirts, like the Salina Soccer Complex or the East Crawford, um, they're hard to monitor, and, um, as long as you're going, especially on the Soccer Complex, which is on East Magnolia, it goes south to where you cannot see anybody, and as you go around the bend there, there are people who are hanging out, doing whatever. Um, matter of fact, uh, just earlier this month, there was a couple people who drove out onto the field, and they're smoking marijuana at one o'clock in the morning. Obviously, we arrested them, but, uh, if they're just hanging out in the parking lot, the only thing we can do is get their names, inquire what they're doing, and then drive off, and then we're at the mercy of, what are they going to do after that, because they're legally allowed to be there? But with the ordinance, we'd be able to remove them from there and cite them for violating curfew, and, um, there'd be less chance for vandalism that way.
Are there further questions, staff? Thank you. Is there any public comment? Come up and just give us your name and your address, that'd be helpful. If I could, could I get you to come up to the podium there, please?
My name is Sid Rich, and I live on North Ninth Street. Does Salina, uh, does, uh, our park out there, uh, is it going to fall under these curfews also?
Yeah, Thomas, Thomas Park would, you're speaking of Thomas Park, would fall under this. Uh, historically, we've allowed overnight camping in Thomas Park, and one of the things that we've talked about is whether we really want to do that or not, or whether we just want to associate with a special event.
Okay, now, do you want to, you want to tell me what is meant by camping?
Well, I would, I, I'm not sure what's happened out there, but I can-
Let me ask, let me ask it this way. Someone who has, uh, a change of clothes in their back, and a tin can to cook their meal in, is that camping? Or are we talking about a family that comes out and, and, uh, has a, not necessarily an, an RV, but a, a tent or something like that?
Yeah, I can't speak to whether an individual or family, but I, I would expect camping would be with a tent, or, you know, some, an RV, something like that.
I'm really in support of you in putting this curfew in there, too, because, um, my house faces the park, and I see things in that park that you absolutely wouldn't believe. And, uh, I know that we're the only family that lives there, that, that close to the park, that would make a difference. But at three o'clock in the morning, when they come through, there are boom boxes that, uh, actually will rattle the pictures on the wall, and, uh, I will have to say that, uh, most of the time, we get pretty good response from the Police Department, but when they're busy, we're on the tail end, and I'm, I'm sorry, Mike, I, I, I know that works that way.
If I could interrupt you real quickly, for Commissioners who might not know, Sid, when he says his house faces the park, he means it faces the park. You actually have to go through the park if you haven't been back into Thomas Park. It's a really odd setup to see, but you actually drive through the park, and his house is accessed that way. Uh, so, yeah, a front row seat of Thomas Park. I'm sorry, go ahead.
But the, uh, the traffic in there, we, we even, and I know this for a fact, we even had a partial delivery service that was not licensed. They would pull in the back with two or three vans, and they would switch their packages around, and then pull out again. Uh, I'm really all for it. Uh, we've got a great police department, but they're stretched pretty thin, and, uh, when you, when there's a fight in the park, and you call them, and it takes fifteen, twenty minutes to get there, and it comes up on their scanner, these people have, all of them have scanners now, they're gone. And, uh, be honest with you, I can't tell you whether they're male or female, or whether they're, what race they are, or what color car they're driving at two or three o'clock in the morning, it just doesn't happen. And, uh, then they ask me all my personal identification, and, well, I can't answer their questions, and I can't ask them to enforce the law, so I can't tell them who was breaking it. And I'm not about ready to walk out there at three o'clock in the morning and say, who are you? I need your name and address. It ain't going to work that way. But Thomas Park, uh, we, we've even had, I've even had motorhomes back in on my driveway and plug in the electrical cord in my house. I've had campers in my barn, uh, I've had parties in my barn. Uh, I don't want to get graphic, but some of the things that goes on in Thomas Park in the backside is something you don't want your family to see.
Sir, what was your address again?
Fifteen thirty-five.
North Ninth? It is Ninth?
You know where Bob's Pawn Shop is?
Yes.
Okay, we're in the back of, and, uh, my driveway is in the back of Bob's Pawn Shop.
Okay.
You go in the north entrance to the park, where the frontiers road is.
Right.
You go through there, and our house, our property starts in the middle of that, uh, hole that used to be a ditch, that used to be a creek.
Mm-hmm.
And it goes from there all the way back to the following creek.
Mm-hmm.
My, my, our property line is the fence that's in front of the house that joins the Park Department. We're the people that keep the grass and the leaves off of that front park, because the Park Department doesn't do it. It's been done by our, my family, or my wife's family for twenty-five years. That's not a complaint. I mean, we're, it takes me three minutes to mow it, but, uh, the traffic in the park at night is, is unreal.
And you've lived there how long?
My wife's been there for thirty years.
Thirty? Okay.
But it, it's, uh, I know we have laws about sound, I know we have laws that you've, uh, the city's put a fifteen mile an hour speed limit in the park, and they hit those the city's put a 15 mile an hour speed limit in the park, and they hit those speed breakers so hard with pickup trucks that you can hear their stuff on the back bang, a clatter in the back of it. And at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, you can hear it out on 9th Street. It's not just a question of, you know, give me a little peace and quiet, it's just the idea that I'm all for this. This is something I've been wanting to go for, to see happen for a long time. The camping is the only thing that bothers me, is because we've never had legitimate campers, as I call them, people that are truly family, or someone who has camping gear. There's probably been, all summer long, I don't believe there's been 15 people come through there on that basis. But the number of homeless people that are, there is a couple that can't get into the shelters because they're a couple, or they have reason not to be wanted seen by identification, they're all over the park. I've seen times when I've gone, gone to bed at night wondering which of the 10 people are gonna come over and take my lawnmower. Because homeless people, and I'm sorry, they know that some of them are legitimate, but they don't have any way to support themselves, and it's theft and pollen. And it's, it's pretty, it's pretty interesting.
Oh, Mike, were you gonna help me visualize this? Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where that, where that drive is.
Right there.
I see it now.
Right there. The building's on the right-hand side of the frontage street.
Mm-hmm.
First one that you see, that's Bob's Pond Shop in his parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
All right, the next one up is that, which is now a car lot. Okay, the center of that ditch that's behind that is where our property starts.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that's a wide open ditch that goes nowhere, it's just a holding area for, for trash and, and stuff.
I see, I see.
But that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about the park.
Right.
Okay, from there, from that driveway, all the way back to the upper left-hand corner where it's got the right angle at the top.
Mm-hmm.
Our property line follows that road, and then follows it across that angle, across it, and then up to the top.
I see. And we do allow camping at this park, is, what other parks do we allow camping? Are there hookups? Are there hookups back there?
No, no, there aren't hookups. It's more of a, I guess you'd call it a tent camping area. If you, it's, it's sort of ironic when you look at the list and you see these parks that have closing times, and Thomas Park isn't on there, yet we've had a, like, almost like a permit type thing for camping, when in fact, someone can be there overnight if they really want to. So, what this would do, this would formalize the closing time for that park, which then actually allows us to look at that permitting process and probably really use it for what it may be better intended for. So, for example, talking about if you just have someone who just hanging out, just for the hangout, to have a place to spend the night, that probably wouldn't be allowable in that situation.
Mm-hmm.
If you're talking about possibly camping for a special event that would be there, it might be allowable, we'd have to look at it. But we've, you know, even though Thomas Park isn't on the original list here of those that were just recently brought to you, I think without question, if we go and look at the, the call volume of calls for concerns, you know, late at night, early in the morning, it fits in there as well.
The, the camping, and two weeks ago, there was a gentleman that came, would come in there around 6:00 or 7:00 in the evening, and he'd leave at 8:00 in the morning, and he was there for 14 days straight. But they had to get a permit from your office?
Yeah, what we've, what we've done is, is I, I don't have in front of me, but I believe there's a certain allowable time, and that they get a permit for any time beyond that. So, and quite honestly, some will go there and, and we'll, we'll catch them, and then we'll get, the police department will drop a note and say, "We found someone camping there," whereas others will, you know, come to our office first. We, we probably only issued a permit, I, from our office, I don't know, two, couple, three times in the last couple of years.
Do you think it's necessary that we leave it, the camping available, or should we?
My, my preference is to associate camping with a special event only.
Right.
Not just open camping.
Right.
There are other places for that.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
So, we can, we'll look at that if, if...
There's another, there's another area that bothers me about Thomas Park. On our other, on the left-hand side of our fence line and across the back, back there, there's actually families that have lived back there for eight or 10 days at a time. And often couples and homeless people are living back there. I didn't see the article, but I was told that there was a policeman, was quoted by the paper, of saying that he dropped a fellow off of there so he'd have a place to stay. Well, I mean, I thought that's what we had, the, the different charitable places here that offered a home, something to eat. But there are actually people that camp back there. There's, they, there's, there's beds, cots back there. Mike, Mike, Steve Snyder and I, I used to laugh about, I'd call them up and tell them there's two beds you need to pick up back there. Sometime, the next two or three days, he'd take the mattresses out. I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff that goes on back there that's not patrolled. And, and you can't, you can't expect a police officer to get out of his police cruiser and walk back through the woods back there.
Mm-hmm. Uh, where is the, where's the city limit line? Evidently, it covers that entire field? Or, or does it?
City limit line...
Should be the red line, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, the red line.
Line runs through the, my house.
It's that red...
If, if this is that line right here, is the city limit line.
And then, and then to the, to the west? Mm-hmm. So, right above that, right north of that is, is county?
Be county jurisdiction.
Okay.
Everything over here is, is county, everything over here, up is county.
Okay. Okay, that, that's, that makes sense to me.
But this, the, the line for our property is this center of this ditch that comes up, and it comes straight up, and then there's a little jog right here, and that's where the city, this is city over here.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
So, I'm, I'm all for the curfew.
Well, you must live in a secret home, 'cause I did not even know that that existed back there. I, I thought all that was park and wildlife back there.
That's why people walk up and flood there and get trailers into our outlets.
Well, thank you for being so patient this far, so far.
For your comments today. Is there any further comment? Bring this back to the commission here.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve on First Reading Ordinance 10-10583, amending Salina Code Section 27-16B, expanding the list of parks with closing hours between 12:00 midnight and 5:00 AM, as noted in Alternative 1, which would include all parks not currently listed to have closing hours.
Before I second out, Jason, were you gonna look at some language, or how do we determine the camping part?
Well, what would happen is that the ordinance already has language regarding permitting, and that's the authority given to, from, from you to the city manager on allowing camping. So, we can, we can do that administratively. If we didn't wanna offer that, we wouldn't have to. You could always institute that if you wanted to, obviously, from voting to amend that ordinance, but we wanted to look at that, because I, we, we were aware of some concerns up in that park as well and really...
Well, and if we're not, if, if we're not utilizing that, I mean, if you were to tell me that two or three times a week, we've got it full with campers, then I can see where this is gonna be a little bit of a hindrance. But if it's not that big of a deal, I suggest that we just take that camping option out.
Yeah, it's not used formally, officially, the, there's not, there aren't requests, many requests at all for camping.
Okay, with, with the exception of you mentioned events that would allow a...
Yeah, and we, I, we could do it where it's event-driven, if you have a...
Correct.
Lead sled, well, that's not at Thomas Park, but some kind of a, a large event through a weekend or something, if you would choose that you, if you're comfortable. We felt we could be comfortable with camping that wouldn't create any issues for the neighborhood, we could do that and associate it with an event, but really only special situations like that.
Okay.
We don't necessarily need to amend this at this time, we could...
You can just do that internally? Okay, then I'll second that motion for alternative number one.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number 10-10583, alternative number one. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Item 8.3, approve change order number four for the Magnolia Commons Edition Infrastructure Improvements Project Number 082733.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Smokey Hill LLC is currently installing the infrastructure in the undeveloped area in the southwest quadrant of I-135 and Magnolia Road in the vicinity of the Menards Development. The current construction contract with Smokey Hill includes an, an aggressive construction schedule, which was necessary at the time to meet the needs of the Menards Development. That included completing the water line for fire protection and completing the streets prior to winter, and I can indicate that both of those have been completed. In late April, early May of this year, plans were complete for all of the infrastructure, with the exception of a stormwater pump station. It was determined late in the design that a pump station was required to empty the stormwater pond due to the layout of the stormwater pond elevation and, and the site. And the consultant indicated that it would take an additional six weeks to complete that design, and basically, we couldn't afford that six-week delay from the bid and still meet all of Menards' timeframe. So, the project was bid with the intent of adding the stormwater pump station at a later date. Smokey Hill provided a detailed cost estimate of $149,500. Wilson and Company prepared an estimate of $160,400, and the city of Salina prepared an estimate of approximately $141,600. Smokey Hill's estimate fell between the city and Wilson and Company's estimate. Based on staff's detailed review of Smokey Hill's cost estimate, we feel it's reasonable for the proposed work. The contract time and contract price both require adjustment. The contract price would include a net increase of $149,500, which would result in a total contract price of $2,428,984.10. The contract time would include an addition of the stormwater pump station in Forest Main with the date of May 1st, 2011. Based on the total construction costs under contract for the infrastructure in Lift Station 47 and all previous change orders, there would remain a construction reserve of roughly $83,700. Staff recommends that the city commission approve change order number four for the Magnolia Commons Edition Infrastructure Improvements Project Number 08-2733 to Smokey Hill LLC of Salina, Kansas. I kinda breezed through some of the details, and I'd be glad to answer any of the specific questions that you might have.
Questions to staff? Is there any public comment? If there isn't, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve change order number four for the Magnolia Commons Edition Infrastructure Improvements Project Number 082733.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve change order number four for the Magnolia Commons Edition Infrastructure Improvements Project Number 08-2733. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Item 8.4, approval of the 2011 SubCIP.
Mr. Frans?
Each year, we approve the funding allocations to finance our, what we call our SubCIP program, largely vehicles and equipment replacements, some building improvements, the annual street repair program, the annual park, park improvements, and that time is rolling around again primarily so we can get the vehicles and equipment specifications out in time to receive bids back in a way that's consistent with the manufacturer's model years before they get out of their order period. We would anticipate that we would have those vehicles and equipment bids back, back to you for consideration, probably during early February. I, I would make one note here, and I, I, you know, I, I must've had a, a mental prolapse when I was preparing these spreadsheets, because I just noticed that the, in the Buildings and Facilities Program, we've listed the women's locker room and the police department twice. That needs to come out of the general fund, it's not supposed to be there. And, and what I would do then is, is reduce that amount by that roughly $100,000, and at least pending the mid-year estimates next year, hopefully that will keep us in a little, little more stable condition. That was the intent to start with, with that, and actually, I think the city manager said something to me about it, I don't remember when, but I just noticed now that it's still there. So, it's kinda like a bad penny, it doesn't wanna leave. Other than that, the, the requests are kind of normal. Did recommend with regard to the vehicles and equipment program that we at least defer on one of the fire department vehicles until we see how the other bids come in, to see if we can squeeze that in under the total estimate. We're very close there, we would like to replace that vehicle, but we need to see how, how everything else comes in, in order to be able to afford to do so.
Mm-hmm.
And with that, I think I'll leave it open to questions.
Questions, Mr. Frans?
Yeah, one quick question for you, in a couple of different places the bicentennial center's listed.
Yes.
Seems like the day for that topic. Just out of curiosity, is this $198,000 that we're spending?
This, this would be the 200,000.
The $200,000 that was budgeted?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It would be.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, I don't know if Mr. Curtis would like to come up as well on this, but regarding Lakewood Fishing Pier Repair, that on the southeast, southwest side of the pond.
Which item are you talking about?
Um, it would be the Lakewood Earth Fishing Pier.
Yeah, that's the south side.
What's the repair?
Well, over time, it's eroded, and so we need to come back in and put new dirt, put new rocks in to hold it in place.
Tell me about the floating fishing pier extension.
Yeah, we added, as part of the flooding that happened in 2007, FEMA paid for the replacement of the wood pier, but it wasn't really big enough.
On the north side?
Right, on the north side. So, what this would do is just add another portion to that.
Now, there's already a pier there, an aluminum-sided one.
Right, and that was one that was replaced, but we would like to add to it and make it a little bit bigger.
Is there access there currently?
There is now, as of Friday, we just poured a, a ramp to, to make access to that.
As of Friday?
Last Friday.
And late summer, an absolute hazard to even be by. I took my kids fishing there, and there was a big pit.
Yeah.
With roughly some hazard tape across it, and I'm surprised that it's taken this long to get that repaired, okay? Two baseball pitching mounds, or pitching mounds, $6,000 bucks.
Yeah, the ones that last. There are some cheaper ones that are made out of plywood, but they just don't last. So, these are ones that we can, they're portable, so you can take them to East Crawford, take them to Matsum if we want, or Travis is actually here. Where else were you wanting to use those?
East Crawford.
Yeah, mainly East Crawford.
Okay. Three ATVs.
On the vehicles and equipment?
Yep.
Yeah, that's a, a program that our field maintenance guys are actually working with, Bob Peck, in the, in the garage, so we can replace those a little bit sooner. The dirt really takes a toll on those ATVs, so we're trying to turn them over a little bit quicker.
The dirt takes a toll on them?
The, and ATVs, mm-hmm, gets in the filters.
Can we replace the filters?
No, well, we have, but they, they wear on the engines as well, and instead of rebuilding the engines, he, he would like us to turn them over a little bit quicker than we have in the past.
Chris, what's the, what's the cycle time of turning them over?
Through, every three years is what he's planning on, on doing on those.
That's incredible. These are, these are ATVs that are used just to rake and, and sort of...
Go from field to field, and, yep.
Wow. And that's really all they do?
Yeah, pretty much.
That seems like a, huh.
But all day long, all day long, and in the summertime, we use them, you know, seven days a week when we have tournaments.
Well, let me know when those go up for auction, 'cause I'd sure be interested in one of those.
All right.
I had a question for Chris too, so...
Okay, and then lastly, the, this is not under the golf course, I'm sorry. I was curious on the Public Works, the mower, the 30-foot boom mower and tractor, what is under Public Works slash Flood? I wasn't sure what that...
What we would, what we would use that for is that, including some of the, the grass that we have in our channels, in our ditches, right now, is that we have to get our mowers down in there, and that when it's wet, you're not able to do any mowing. With a boom mower, you can reach down there with the 30-foot boom to be able to catch a lot of those areas. There are some places, like I said, that we have problems when it's wet, other places where it's very steep, and I think the, the 30-foot boom gives us the ability to do a better job of mowing in different types of conditions.
Okay. Okay.
Chris, my question is, what, what is the ornamental fence at Oakdale Park?
That's a, excuse me, a permanent fence that Bob with the Parks Department would like to put up. In the last couple of years, at least three different events, we've been required to put up the temporary fence for an event in the park, Rua Festival being one of those. He would like to add this permanent fence on the north side of Oakdale Park.
North side of the park?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay, where, where there's always that orange?
There's always an orange snow fence, and that takes a lot of man-hours and time.
So, this would be like, like a wrought iron ornamental type of...
It would be similar to what we have around Kenwood Cove.
Oh, okay.
It's not really wrought iron, but it has that wrought iron look.
But that height as well?
That's the plan, yes.
I wonder why you'd go something that tall instead of doing something like over at Sunset?
Mainly because he wants it to be a barrier for those events and still look nice for the park.
Okay, where does it end at?
On the east or on the west?
Well, take it, it goes all the way to the road.
Yeah, it goes all the way right there from the bridge, on the east side, right in front of the old pool, straight west.
Over to the other...
Mm-hmm, to the other entrance.
Right across there on that, yeah.
I must be thinking of a different area.
From the, from the statues, I take it from the statues on that one entrance all the way over to where the road starts.
Correct, right with the bridge there.
We have a six-foot fence going along that entire perimeter? We have a six-foot fence going along that entire perimeter? We're going to have a six-foot fence?
That's the plan.
That seems, huh.
You think that looks like a prison?
Yeah, I think that seems very odd aesthetically for that area. And then you're, you're also saying that there's going to be one on the west side that would go?
No, no, I thought, I was asking clarification on which end you meant when you said, where does it end? It would run, yeah, it'd run east and west from.
Extend past the Little Statue of Liberty on the.
Go, go, go more, go more north.
No, yeah, you.
Gotcha. Starts there.
Starts there, go all the way east, like you're going towards the bicentennial center.
Towards that bridge, and would end at the bridge.
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioners, one other note on the park improvements is that the, the budget amount of $230,000 comes from the gas tax specifically for, when we get that, part of it can go in the general fund, part of it's for the park improvements, and part of it goes for treatment programs.
Alcohol tax.
I'm sorry, I said gas tax, alcohol tax. I was thinking it right, didn't say it right. Anyhow, and these, this project list also goes in front of your Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and they kind of go through the same kind of questioning that you have, and then they make the recommendation before it gets to you.
Right.
I just noticed it wasn't in the narrative and thought that might be helpful.
And, and one more. What are the traffic cameras at what two intersections? Under traffic signals, traffic cameras at two intersections. Who would that be?
That's me. I, I don't recall right, right yet what those.
We have, we have a list of intersections that we put.
They don't have cameras currently at these intersections, and you're wanting to put them in?
That's correct.
Me, the two closest to your house.
Wouldn't be surprised.
Commissioners, in our, in our intersections, we have a list of intersections for, that we would like to have the, the cameras. And again, just to remind the public, we use the cameras to control the lights, not to write tickets or take their picture or anything like that. We have a preemption.
Cameras moved, though. I thought you moved them from intersection to intersection when you're, aren't those just to do studies on traffic or whatever? They're there permanently?
Yeah, those are just there for that purpose.
Okay.
And then we also do preemption. We have a list, we have a list for the, the backup control panels, or the, the control panels with backup power, and then for the LED replacement of the LED lights.
Yeah, I saw that underneath there. So, each of those cameras is $17,000. He was surprised about the ATV. I was surprised about that little camera. $17,000 for?
That's a budget estimate, but I, we hope it'll always be a little bit lower, but should be close.
They're typically that expensive to be able to put that in. You've got to be able to, to do the camera, you've got the wiring, you've got the controls that you put in the box that goes to that, and that, but that's typically what we've paid in the past for those.
The, the camera, I mean, it's not like a regular camera for it just sees, it sees, and then the computer aspect has to process and say, there are so many cars, or they're so far away, and then it controls the, changing the lights, so.
And you have, and you have four cameras. So, it's more than one camera. You have one that faces each one of the, the legs to the intersection. So, there's, at each intersection, you have four cameras.
All right, that makes more sense. Okay, thank you. Those were my questions.
On the parks, the last question I had was that second item, special parks portion of the Smoky Hill Master Plan.
Yeah, commissioners, earlier in the year when, actually, was it earlier? It was last year. It was last year when you approved the, the master plan for the Smoky Hill River Renewal Project. You also approved authorizing the use of $100,000 from the, the special alcohol funds for the purpose of this and ended up coming into this year.
This year.
To help offset that cost.
Okay. Couldn't you love being grilled by us?
Thanks. Any, any other questions? Not all accept, well, is there any public comment? Not all accept a motion?
To approve the 2011 SubCIP, subtracting $103,000 from Buildings and Facilities.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the 2011 SubCIP, subtracting $103,000 under, what was that, Buildings and Improvements? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Item 8.5, resolution number 106787, authorizing agreement with Saline County for prisoner housing and dispatch services.
Frans?
For a number of years, since late 1990s, anyway, the City of Salina and Saline County have had an agreement providing for prisoner housing, housing municipal prisoners in the Saline County Jail. For nearly as long, the amount of that annual contract has been determined by essentially working with a third party, Maximus, to do a cost study, and then they would come back with numbers saying, you know, the city owes the county this much per prisoner day each year. The methodology used was a total costing methodology, meaning they looked at not only the direct costs of operating the jail, and by the way, the dispatch system on the other side, all of that came in a little bit later, but also all the overhead expenses. The end result has been, for a number of years, a fairly frustrating and time-consuming process of going through the report, making sure we understood it, making sure that there weren't errors in it, or errors in the underlying data, and they were surprisingly common. That's my personal opinion, I guess. But it was not unusual to find corrections that needed to be made into their report. Early on this year, both Saline County and City of Salina staff made a commitment to find some easier, better way than paying Maximus, or some third-party, the fees that we were paying them to do this. The result is attached, essentially is for a term of four years. It covers the 2010 reimbursement and sets 2010 reimbursements at the amounts that we had both originally budgeted. The reason we did that is we were both in fairly tight budgetary situations, and we didn't want any surprises going one way or the other with regards to true-up for the previous year. And then it covers 2011, 2012, 2013 with an inflator factor. I think both parties benefit from, from the agreement. We save money in the sense that we don't have to pay a third party to do the analysis, and I think it'll take much, much less staff time each year to work through the, work through the program and to verify the, the amounts. Essentially, the contract provides for $506,000, which was the original agreement for 2010, $525,000 for 2011 for jail services, and then for dispatch services, which of course are city services provided to the county, $112,596, again, the original agreement for 2010, and $99,00113 for 2011. We kept it simple. We pulled all the overhead, complete costing out, and basically just look at direct costs each way, and tried to keep it simple and, and acceptable to both parties. And it seems to, I think we've come up with a, with a fairly decent way of doing this. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions.
Questions?
Oh, the, the Board of County Commissioners did approve this two weeks ago.
Thank you. Any public comment? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve resolution 10-6787, authorizing the agreement with Saline County for prisoner housing and dispatch services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number 10-6787. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Item 8.6, award of contract for the Marymount Road pavement rehabilitation and drainage improvements, project number 092783.
Mr. Stack?
Commissioners, on this particular item, one thing that staff would like you to do, if you would, is to table this to the last item on the agenda. If we get past the other items, we have a legal aspect that we would need to discuss on this.
Do you need a motion for us to table this?
I, I believe the mayor has the ability just to simply move it to the end of the agenda.
Yeah, we'll just table this. And we'll move on to 8.7. Mr. Stack?
Item 8.7, approved change order number one with Westar Energy for the landfill facility cell five, construction project number 092763.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a, a final close, one of our final closeout items for the landfill cell five. This wasn't related necessarily to the cell, the cell contractor and, and some of the challenges we have with the landfill. However, it was agreement we had with, with Westar to supply power to our Leach Eight system as well as a, a new equipment shed building that we had there. And when we started the project a year, year and a half ago, they gave us an estimate for the costs, and it's typical how Westar gives us an estimate for the costs, and then when the actual costs of the construction come in later, we are tasked with paying the actual cost of whatever it costs to put the service in. So, in this case, they estimated a little lower than they do normally. We don't normally have to come back for extra money from them, but in this case, they're lower than the original estimate. And so, I guess we're just asking today to approve the change order for 294769 with Westar Energy for actual costs of the work to supply power to our Leach Eight facility and our equipment building. I wouldn't entertain questions about that.
Questions, Mr. Stack? Seems like they've been pretty honest and fair in the past.
Mhm.
Yeah, we tried to use that as an example. Typically, they're not low. This was just one where they were, and.
Sure. Okay. Questions? Is there any public comment? There's not, I will accept a motion.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve change order number one with Westar Energy for the landfill facility cell number five, construction project 092769.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve change order number one for project, city project number 09-2769. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Do we need to?
May I ask for a few-minute break here?
Ask for a break, or can we?
Certainly true discretion, Mayor.
Yeah. We can ask for, for a break, make it convenient.
Okay. Glad to.
Have a moment of silence, possibly.
A rare public glimpse at Greg's humor. Cluster down. Do you need a break, Doris?
Well, I'm going to take one if you're ready. I wouldn't want to talk to me alone.
We need to vote on a break, or can we just take a five-minute recess?
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Go ahead. Call the meeting back to order here. We'll move on to item 8.8.
First reading ordinance number 10-10585, amending chapter eight of the Salina Code by adding Article VII pertaining to toxic chemical remediation.
Mr. Hobbie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, you have before you this afternoon an ordinance that will set in place the chemical, toxic chemical remediation process for the City of Salina. At our October 25th study session, you sent us away with several options to work on, and we have completed those with the assistance of the City Attorney's Office with Jared Johnson and Greg Binkson. City staff have been through several opportunities with different cities and different ordinances to look through the process, and we feel like we have a process ready for you today. The revisions that have taken place since the city commission study session, including the revisions of the standard remediation contaminants, has been confirmed by KDHE. The inventory for the preliminary assessment has been clarified. We also required contents of the final report that has been modified and clarified. The post-remediation actions have been revised. A couple of the questions that follow up from our study session included, does an owner have the ability to pursue criminal charges for destruction of property? And the property owner would have the option of pursuing civil, civil claim in a district court without the need of any additional authorization. The second question was, do contaminants dissipate over time? The staff has been unable to be able to find out a specific answer to this information, but confirms that the houses have been asked, or most houses are opened up to the open air prior to the remediation process, but they have not been able to confirm for us that the contaminants will dissipate over time. City staff feels like there will be some financial responsibility for the city if the owners of the properties do not remove the contaminations themselves, and so it may affect our ordinance, or may affect our budget on a yearly basis. If those items do not get completed, then we have to go in and remediate, then a process will be charged back to the property owners themselves. We feel like this is a great ordinance for the City of Salina, and we are open for any comments and questions. Jared Johnson and Greg Binkson from the City Attorney's Office have been very instrumental in this process, as well as city staff, and we're here to answer any questions for you.
Any questions or comments? Tell you that I recently, excuse me, read an article about a young couple on the east coast who had purchased their first home and began having significant health problems and found out that their home was formerly a meth lab, and it makes me more convinced that these types of ordinance are going to be more important going forward to protect a lot of different people, so. Again, no? If not, is there any public comment? Doesn't look like it. Accept a motion.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number 10-10585, amending chapter eight of the Salina Code by adding Article VII pertaining to toxic chemical remediation.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number 10-10585. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Would you want us to hold off on 8.6 until after executive session?
Yeah, if we could go ahead and go into executive session for the, with the motion for the legal reasons for 15 minutes, Greg?
Yes.
And then we'll come back and address item 8.6. So, that means there very well could be action after that executive session.
Okay. Is there additional business?
On other business, I'd like to just make a note to the public that we're going to postpone looking at that fireworks ordinance next week because staff needs some more time, so we'll look at it January 3rd.
January 3rd.
Okay.
Okay. Invite anyone from the public to come and sit in on that meeting, so. Additional business then?
Mayor, move to recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene at 6:25 PM.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session for 15 minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We are in executive session, and we do expect action.
Thursday, partly cloudy skies are in the forecast again with highs of 35 to 40. In Wichita and in Hutchinson this evening, a reading of 30 degrees. Salina, 29. In Manhattan, 26 degrees. Great Bend has a reading of 27. In Hayes, 28 degrees. Public radio for Andale, Canton, and Enterprise. We're Radio Kansas, made possible by contributions from listeners like you. I'm Geraldine Smith. The time now is 6:31.
From NPR News in Washington, I'm Ann Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This project has been under consideration for over a year now, and the last time we brought it to you was 11/23/09, with basically a scope to remove and replace the rough and aged pavement throughout Merrymount Road. Full removal and replacement will be from Glen to the north, all the way to Iron. There is a new section at Iron. Wait, can you pull that up? Maybe, yeah, I don't think we'll be able to actually. Glen, the Iron and Merrymount intersection will be total removal and replacement. But there is some new pavement just south of Iron that we will not have to remove. But then all the way down to Ruskin will be total removal and replacement. A lot of drainage work will occur at the intersection of Glen, all the way over to Claremont to the west, and then just south of Ruskin will be the limit of the drainage improvements. South of Ruskin will be just pavement patching. It's not as bad in that section. And so we just do pavement patching and do a lot of the intersections that do have bad intersections, all the way to Crawford Street, where at Crawford, we redo the whole intersection, basically. Not going out into Crawford, but the north side of the intersection is terrible pavement, very bumpy, and actually broke and potholed right now. So that'll be a full removal and replacement. Sidewalk will be constructed along the areas that don't have sidewalk. North of Glen, we have to go along a cemetery, and so we're proposing to narrow the road to be able to fit a sidewalk in that location. There is some existing sidewalk along Gypsum Hill Cemetery, so we are proposing to remove and replace some of that that's aged and broken. On the south end of the project, we have some sidewalk south of Starlight that's gonna need to be installed, and that's where we'll have to actually put some retaining walls near the fire station. So that's in the backyards of some houses that front Briar Cliff, but they'll have to, or will have to put a sidewalk through there, through their backyards, basically, on the Merrymount side. That will complete the corridor, and we'll have sidewalk all the way from Iron to Crawford. Some substantial completion dates to talk about, the main one being August 15th. That's the date that we've had the contractor agree to in the proposal to complete the project. However, there are a lot of different interim and smaller completion dates in the project. Basically, in summary, just to say, we can't have them close down everything all at the same time and then just work slowly. We can't afford that on these projects, and typically, they're pretty good about that, but we just wanted to make sure. So when they close an intersection, they're responsible for getting it back within 14 days. And that's the minor intersections like Crawford Place, Starlight, Brookwood, Queens, Northwood, et cetera. And that's basically gonna take a little more focused effort. They're gonna hopefully put, you know, all their guys on a couple of intersections at a time and get them done. And that is kind of the intent of the entire project, is to focus on areas and complete them, so that people aren't out of their driveways for very long, you don't see, you just need to see a lot of work going on in some more focused areas. Definitely with the school there, we had to put some limits on Glen east of Merrymount. And so May 19th being the last school day, we'd have that, no work can be done on that area until after school gets out, basically. So that'll be an area where they'll have to get in and get out quickly, but it'll have to be after school gets out. And another one is Crawford intersection, that'll be a 60-day time period on that, and they have to maintain two-way traffic at Crawford intersection. The worst phase of this project will be the very last phase. At the very end, when we've narrowed the section but north of Glen, we will actually have one-way traffic for the last phase. And that's where they'll be, they're only able to put in so much pavement enough to, or you can't have two-way traffic north of Glen. So that will be probably the most inconvenient time of the project. But again, we put 60 calendar days on that as well, and they should be able to meet that schedule and get that done the minute they remove, or 60 days when they remove it. Mitigate damages are $500 a day for any days where lanes are closed beyond what I've talked about above. And there's more in the contract, but I just tried to hit some of the highlights. Bids were received last Tuesday. Bryant is the low bidder. We had competitive bids. Engineer was not the low bidder for once, which was nice. And we had a good range of bids, actually, very competitive. So we felt like it's a good, very good bid. Bryant Bryant's been very good at reconstruction in town. They last performed a curb repair project in that same area, and they're able to remove curb and not disturb a lot of private property, which is very helpful. That's one of the good things that their curb machine has that we're very happy with. And they have a lot of guys that do a lot of good handwork. So this will be mostly handwork, mostly handwork, whereas some of the contractors would have probably used machines more. These guys are good at handwork. Let's see, the funds are allocated in 2010 SubCIP, and we are asking for a 5% construction contingency here. We've typically asked for three. And it seems, especially on rehab projects, that you always run into more than you bargain for on, when you remove pavement, you find soft spots or tear out concrete, and it spalls further, and you gotta take out more, take out more concrete. So we know this concrete's old, and so we just feel like we'd like to have a little more leeway with overrunning concrete quantities or sidewalk, or making sure we do the best we can to get a good project. So we're asking for a 5% contingency on this job. Now we'll entertain questions. And I do have a map up now that we can look at, so when you have questions, we can hopefully go to the map.
Dan, you keep talking about phases.
Yes.
How many are there?
There are.
Are the red, do the red things signify phases?
No, those were just kind of locations.
Because I noticed that they're like in groupings, but that doesn't mean that's...
Yeah, it's kind of a phase, because the storm sewer work, for example, is a phase, and so that, where I've grouped that, that's kind of a phase. They'll be doing storm sewer work, that'll be the first thing they work on.
Okay, that was my question. When you were, when you were mentioning them, I didn't know if you were mentioning them in order. I just caught the part about the school area, and that made sense.
Yep.
And then we know that the northern part is going to be one of the last ones closer to Iron. So they're starting with the storm sewer intersection first, and then they'll move south?
You know, and they haven't, we haven't had a pre-construction meeting with them, so I didn't tell them when they could start things, but I have talked to them enough to know they're gonna start with storm sewer in February. That'll be the first thing that starts.
Okay. Will this street ever be closed, or will there always be a one-lane that you're aware of?
There will always be at least one lane, but there might be times where, yeah, there's only one, because during the time when they're pouring from Glen to Iron, they'll probably have to close a lane. We'll have two-way traffic for a while there, but they'll have to close a lane to actually have the concrete trucks pouring over to the actual work. So there'll be some one-lane closures and detour routes, and people will have to, will get pretty familiar with those, because it's gonna happen.
Okay, well, I'm already, you know, thinking that that is a very, very high-traffic area. I know that they're gonna be very excited that this is finally getting done.
Yes.
But I just know that there's just a lot of traffic there, and with the summer and the East Crawford facility and everything up at the, at the country club, and I just wanna make sure that this will be done as conveniently as possible.
Yeah, we put limits on a lot of their construction just to make sure they do it as fast as they can, so.
And February to August is not a long time.
It's not a long time, that's right. And that, we were, I was a little nervous about that, actually. I thought that might increase bids, and I think in a good economy, they would have liked to do that, but now, they're all really hungry, so we were able to go a lot more on this job.
That's not a long time at all. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Further questions?
Dan, one quick question on here. Do you anticipate, it doesn't say, but do you anticipate any pavement work on Glen from the intersection west? Because it does show storm sewer and drainage work, and I didn't know if that would cause you to have to do some pavement work there.
Oh, that's, it's a good question, because the contingency, that, that's an old ditch street, old, just ditch street section. So we're gonna be working in the ditch, but whether or not we break off parts of the road during that time will be, is a concern that we have. We don't anticipate that, but it's possible.
About, what, two years ago, I think, roughly, two or three years ago, we did some, basically some patching, and I think we may have put some, I don't remember if we did a, was it micro-surfacing? Okay.
So it's not in bad shape now, but we will have to possibly do some work on the edge as necessary.
Okay.
Further questions?
Questions?
Any public comment? I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I move that we award, Mayor, I move that we award the contract for the Merrymount Road pavement rehabilitation and drainage improvement project number 09-2783 to Bryant and Bryant Construction.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we award project number 09-2783 to Bryant and Bryant Construction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters.
Mayor? I'm sorry. I just wanted to suggest that with what we were able to deal with in your last executive session, we'd like to suggest trying to do so in this next one in 30 minutes. I'd like that.
I would amend that to 30 minutes, and also to discuss matters pertaining to the acquisition of real estate for the reason that public discussion of the matter would adversely affect the city's position in relation to acquisition of the real estate and reconvene at 7:00, 7:10.
I apologize, Commissioner, I forgot about the second part. Jumped in.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we recess into executive session for 30 minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We expect any significant action?
We expect no action.
We're in executive session.